The city of Bristol, providing beautiful parks, economic development, and a family-friendly community.
So I will call our joint meeting to order and ask that we stand and say the pledge of allegiance. The flag is over to my left.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's, we got a couple other people joining us, too. Let's do introductions from my left. Go ahead, Sebastian.
Sebastian Paniotto.
Jolene Lucetani.
Jeff Cagiano.
Jacqueline Olson.
Cheryl Tebow.
And then we'll do Zoom. David, you're first. Can you hear us?
Yes, David Mikowski.
Thank you. Marie?
Yep, Marie O'Brien.
Glenn Heiser.
Glenn Heiser.
There you go. Ron?
Ron Burns, Board of Finance.
Good. Am I missing anybody? Oh, back there. John Mace. And I think we have everybody. Very good.
Mayor, can I just remind everyone, if you are speaking, please speak into the mic clearly, and you have to hit your button, and it needs to lift in order for you to speak, and then when you're done, if you would, to shut the speaking off. Thank you.
Perfect. And since you have that down, Teresa, I'll let you introduce the first agenda item.
Approval of minutes of the regular joint meeting on April 12th, 2022, and special joint meeting on April 28th, 2022.
Move approval.
All right, we have a motion in a second. We, any changes, amendments, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right, number two, the consent agenda, right?
Yes.
Does anybody wish to withdraw anything from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. It's a slight delay in here, so we'll get used to that. Number three, Teresa?
Make an additional appropriation totaling $36,514,521 within the Special Education Grant Fund funded by grant revenue.
Second.
Any discussion, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Number four.
To transfer $45,000 within the Public Works operating budget for motor fuels.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Number five.
Transfer $55,000 within the Public Works operating budget for salt brine equipment.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. We're on to number six.
To make an additional appropriation totaling $4,735,000 within the coronavirus relief fund for various projects.
Second.
Any comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. And number seven.
To transfer $35,000 from the general fund contingency account for sewer payments.
Second.
Any comments, discussion? Yep, questions?
Yes, as part of that, there was a statement that said, please see attached email from Corporation Council for explanation, but I didn't see one. So I'm curious as to, first of all, is the general fund contingency account, is that taxpayer money? And why is the sewer bill so high? And I'm a little confused on that subject.
Yep. I think a good question without the party there. So there was a, quite honestly, a clerical error on this, and certainly Corporation Council can help me on this, where when we combined both sewer and water and the billing process, we had an issue where these 32 properties were not actually, we were supposed to be paying those bills, and we did not pay those bills. So accidentally, these bills went unpaid for a period of time. Sewer Department caught on to this, realized that there was a problem, they actually started hanging door hangers, and they were going to turn people's waters, water off. We went back and put all this paperwork together, and I think the short answer of it is, this is the money that the city owed for Bristol Housing Authority properties, and it's something that, you know, we have allocated in our budget for next year, but this is a lot of back payment as well.
Did I do well, Legal and Diane?
Thank you.
Through the chair?
Yep.
Why is the city paying the water and sewer and not the housing authority?
This was an agreement that was made a while ago. I don't know if anybody has any further information that they'd wish to share on this. And this, this was, these were Bristol Housing Authority properties that were actually fully owned previous to this by the city, but then the Bristol Housing Authority sold it to another outside authority, most of the homes to another outside authority, 120-something if I remember correctly? 122.
Are they still used for affordable housing?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Number eight, we're on to the Comptroller's Update. So that's you, Diane.
All right, what do I have to press? Can everyone hear me? There we go. Good evening, everyone. So you had the report in front of you, just a couple of updates that I do want to give you. This report was run probably a week earlier, and we had some turnover, so there were some things that weren't posted in the account. And then after the tax collector ran her report, she had a huge escrow payment come in for real estate. So on the tax revenue side, I just want to report that while we were at 99.9% or 153.5 million of current levy, through today, right now, we've actually exceeded the budget that we had. So we're actually at 100.1% of collections on, on the current levy. So I thought I would report on that, and also on the prior year tax revenue, we were at 132% when this report was run, and right now, we're at 138% of budget. So we're generating some good surpluses in the property tax line items. And again, as I have been reporting, the supplemental motor vehicle is coming in well over budget. Right now, we're at $2.2 million, and we budgeted 1.5. So with two more months left on collections, more will probably come in on those as well, though our collection rate on the supplemental and the motor vehicle is a little bit less than the real estate and personal property. Building permits, we're actually at 131%. We were at 127 at the time this report was run. It's about $380,000 over budget right now, and same thing with conveyance fees, we're at 191% of budget, and it's about $775,000 over what we had estimated. So again, some areas are generating good surpluses that we can use going forward. Allocate it to reserves at year end, and, and we do have money that we have to put into the equipment building sinking fund at the end of the year as well. I did add on this report, we do have police extra duty. We do bill for the private duty that is paid for by contractors for all of that work, so it is 100% reimbursable. There is an administrative fee that's built into that. So currently, we are at 1.6 million that we've collected, and the salaries associated with those services is 1.3. So there is a little bit of a surplus being generated there as well. As you'll know, right now, you just did the contingency transfer for the sewer payments, so the contingency right now is at 561,000 with two months left to go. And just wanted to report, the ARPA task force approved a total of $24.7 million. We did file our quarterly report for March 31st. We actually only spent through March 31st, 299,000. This report, we didn't have a lot to put in. We will have a lot more to put in with the next report, because the final approval of when you all approved those projects was after March 31st. One other thing that I do want to report on, you know, as you know, the state budget was approved. You do have a joint meeting on Monday to finalize the budget. There are some issues that will need to be addressed. The state budget, the real thing of significance that affected the state budget was the motor vehicle cap. The motor vehicle mill rate cap is at 32.46. We're currently at 38.35, so we will only be billing the motor vehicle supplemental and the 10-1 list at 32.46. The state revenue right now that we have, and we did confirm this with OPM and through CCM as well, they're actually using the 2020 grant list numbers to do the calculation. And as you know, this current year, we had a huge increase in our motor vehicle grant list, so we're not going to get reimbursed on that grant list. We'll get reimbursed on the 2020 and 2019. At least that right now is the way the calculation has been presented to us. That being said, the state grant revenue, let me back up. The mill, the revenue loss in that mill rate calculation is about $3.1 million to the city. So that's if we build at 38.35 versus 32.46. It's 3.1 million. The state revenue that we will get as a reimbursement is 2.8 million. So there's about $300,000 that we just need to make an adjustment for at the meeting on Monday. We do have some recommendations, so you will have that in time for your meeting on Monday, and it will not affect the mill rate. So I did want to report on that and see if anybody had any other questions on the state budget or the city budget going forward, or what's going to happen on Monday.
Any questions for Diane?
And with regards to the cap on the mill rate for motor vehicles, another way to say it, which I was talking to other people on, is that basically the taxpayers are going to see, the city of Bristol are going to see a $3.1 million tax savings this year. Without us changing the mill rate, we are going to have to take $300,000 out of our budget to cover that. But it is pretty good news for the taxpayers who have seen a pretty good increase in car taxes over the last year or two.
So that's all I have to report. Does anybody have any other questions?
I have one question, please. Diane, do we know, and Mayor, do we know how this will be treated next year?
We do not. As far as the reimbursement, no.
Yeah, it's a, it's a one, one-time bill that they put through because of the extra surplus that they had, so.
They call it the transition grant, so, yeah.
Might, might not, yeah. Thanks. Any other questions on Zoom? No? Thank you, Diane.
Thank you.
We'll move forward, and I lost my agenda, but hang on a second. I think I just have to ask, is there any other business to come before us? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, and I'm looking at my time. We'll start, it will give us a four-minute break. I don't think we need a big break here. We'll start at 7:05. I will start the meeting at 7:03 and call the City Council meeting on Tuesday, May 10th, to order, and I'm going to turn it over to Sue Tyler for a quick introduction before we do the pledge.
I am honored tonight to welcome BSA Troop 1425 from Gloria Day Church with their Scout Master Quinn St. Germain and his other assistant scout masters to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
So just stand, and when the scouts are ready, and the flag is, yeah. There we go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Yep, you can fill in the seats or stand around. Thank you very much. And next, I will ask Coach Barrett to come up to the, you can, you've been here before, Coach, right? You know how the microphone works at the Board of Ed. I'm glad we waited till we got here. As you all know, this has been a very exciting year. I think this is my third or fourth appearance with this team, and I'm excited to have him here at the City Council meeting, and we'll turn it over to Coach Barrett.
Thank you. First off, I would like to thank Mayor Jeff Cagiano for the invitation to tonight's City Council meeting. I also like to thank all the distinguished members of the City Council and all other city dignitaries in attendance tonight. I first would like to thank my administration for their support, led by Principal Pete Wininger and Athletic Director Chris Casson. This season, we were able to travel all over the state competing in the largest venues, and this was all possible thanks to your support. You were in attendance at every game and right there to shake our coaching staff's hands after our biggest victories. The support did not go unnoticed. I would also like to thank my coaching staff, Joe DeFlippy, Kyle Phelan, and Keith Lipscomb. These three assistants are the reason for our success. Each coach contributed to the success of this team in their own way. I am lucky to have the staff I have, and I know I wouldn't be here tonight without them. I'm also very honored to call you three my friends. I started last year's speech to the City Council talking about the danger of the word potential. Coming into the season, preseason ranked number one, we had pressure that no other team across the state had. Our coaching staff, the state, the entire city of Bristol, all knew we had potential to make this a memorable season, but the question remained, would we live up to it? As I stand here in front of you this evening, I can confidently say we did, and then some. On that Saturday morning, March 19th, I felt an energy in that gym I hadn't seen all year. The look was one of focus, determination, and excitement, all wrapped into one 90-minute walkthrough practice session. We were about to finish a run that will be remembered in Bristol sports history. We loaded that bus Saturday night, and there was playful banter amongst players, smiles on everyone's faces, and music to be heard, which is the normal on most of our road trips. We took the Route 2 exit, as you most, most of you know, in Hartford, and everything just stopped. There was no more music or talking to be heard, and there was a concentrated look of a job to do. It was then our coaching staff knew we were ready to go. The game is all blurred to me at this point, but one thing is not. I couldn't be prouder that evening to say I was from Bristol. With a record attendance of close to 7,000 people at Mohegan Sun for that championship game, Bristol occupied about 90% of those tickets. The sea of maroon that occupied both the lower and upper bowls of Mohegan Sun Arena is an image that I will never forget. For our many friends, family, students, and even some of the City Council members that are in front of me tonight, I wanted to make sure I took the opportunity to say thank you. The atmosphere, final result, and team celebration on the floor after the final horn sounded is something that these kids can cherish for the rest of their lives, and moments like this are so rare in our society today. As the head coach of the Bristol Central Rams, I was able to coach a genuinely great group of student athletes this season. Their character, hard work, and toughness was on display the entire season. You can't win 43 straight games without these traits. We're able to make it through our entire season without a COVID shutdown, which was a testament to our willingness to sacrifice the personal choices for the betterment of the team and the want to reach our team goals. That is our second consecutive year without even having a pause due to COVID. I want to take a moment to highlight the list of team goals we had started this season with and what we accomplished. First goal, win the division title. We were the 2022 CCC South Divisional Champions with a perfect 7-0 record. This was our third consecutive divisional championship. Go undefeated. We finished the season with a 28-0 record. We have won 43 consecutive games and have not lost a game since February 29th, 2020, a span of 28 months. With trips to Springfield College, two games at Mohegan Sun, Trinity College, and two trips to Floyd Little in New Haven, we ran the gauntlet of games on the road without a blemish. Win the CCC tournament. We were able to win our second consecutive CCC tournament championship, a first in Bristol sports history. Win the state title. Division II state champions, the first since 1990. Finish the year ranked number one in the state. We were ranked number one every week during the season, and now have held that distinguished honor for the last 16 months. We were able to accomplish every goal we had set for this season, and I couldn't be prouder of this group of young men. I only hope my young men can sit back one day and reflect upon the magnitude of their accomplishments, because the list I just read will likely never be accomplished again in Connecticut high school basketball. Up on the hill, I have a great group of gamers, players who want the ball in the biggest moments, and the attitude, gentlemen, will allow you to succeed not only on the basketball court, but in life itself. Though I am extremely proud of this trait, it is your constant manners, positive attitude, and all-around sportsmanship and citizenship that I am most proud of. I can't tell you how many coaches around the state have reached out to me to congratulate us not on our, only our championship, but to commend us for the student athletes we have on our boys' basketball team that represent our school. Parents, you should be very proud of these young men. COVID has taken away so many opportunities for these young men over the last three years, and because of this, there were a lot of questions that will never be answered. Well, gentlemen, there's one question that was answered. You are the undefeated, number-one-ranked 2022 Division II state champions, and no one will ever take that from you. At this time, I would like to ask each of the players that are present tonight to step forward and be recognized for their roles in our accomplishments this season. I'll start with my seniors. Victor Rosa. Damian Glasper. Carson Ravora. Donovan Klingon. An extra note, those four were my captains for this season, so. Juniors, Jason Van Beveren. Zach Viness. John Manuel Gomez. And Mason Stokes. I'd also like to call up Coach Keith Lipscomb. And Coach Joe DeFlippy. I want to thank you again for the opportunity to honor these boys who have worked so hard this season and deserve this recognition. We can't be prouder to be the state champions and represent Bristol. This championship was for you, Bristol. Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
Very fun. Thank you, everybody. All right. Little bit difficult to go from celebration after celebration with that team to a moment of reflection, but I do want to take a moment to remember Vito Hernandez. Vito was a graduate and premier athlete of Bristol Central and graduated in 1969. Later in his life, he assisted many coaches and teams in the Bristol schools throughout, throughout the years in a variety of sports. He also started out as a grant-funded outreach worker at Bristol Central and Bristol Eastern. That position became permanent and later transitioned to a para position. While having the role of an outreach worker, he facilitated positive partnering support groups for youth with adjustment and behavioral needs. He also served as a mentor. Most notably, he was a liaison between students and teachers, and helped bridge communication between underserved youth and educators. He was also awarded the Ralph Papasion Leadership Award in 2019, and overall, he was an amazing man and enjoyed helping and working with children. He was loved by many, and I'd like to just take a moment of silence in his memory. Thank you. All right, we can move on to item number two, approval of the minutes from April 12th, and the public hearing on April 12th.
Move approval.
Second.
Any comments, changes, amendments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Number three, public participation. Did we have a sign-up sheet, Teresa? I don't see it. It's up over there.
No one has signed up.
Anybody on Zoom wish to speak under public participation? And I'll come back here. Anybody in the Board of Ed like to speak? We're all good? Okay. That might be a first for us. Number four, we'll do announcements, and I'll start on my right. So go ahead, Cheryl.
I have nothing, sir.
Jackie? Oops, Jackie, sorry, I didn't turn.
Was trying to turn on my microphone. April was Autism Awareness Month, and the, our police department has started a special needs registry to better assist police officers who may be responding to a loved one's residence. The registry is available, for people who can apply would be the blind or deaf persons, adults and children on the autism spectrum, verbally impaired, cognitive or intellectually disabled, and adults with Alzheimer's. So if you know anyone that fits this, I would urge you to have them register with the police department. There is a link that they can go to. I'm not going to read it, because obviously, you're not going to be able to write it down, but if you want to, I can give you one of these pieces of information for that. But I do urge you to do that. The other thing that I wanted to mention was the Water and Sewer Department team. They beat Meriden, New Britain, and Waterbury in the hydrant hysteria, and they are moving on to San Antonio for the Nationals. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks. We'll try to make sure we get the Bristol Police Registry up on the All Hard page, but I do believe the, it's on their page, so you can find it through the Connecticut Bristol Police Department Facebook page. I'll move on to you, Commissioner Tyler.
Just really quick, a reminder, the 19th Annual Shamrock Run and Walk is being held on May 28th at Muzzy Field. Also, associated with that will be a blood drive sponsored by the Shamrock Road Race Committee, that's on the 23rd, and a pasta dinner, which is held on Thursday, May 26th. A lot of fun things to do.
Great. And the Shamrock Run starts at Muzzy Field and ends on Muzzy Field. It's a little different than in the past. They did do that in October, but thank you. Jolene?
Yes, I have a few. For Youth Commission, this Wednesday, May 11th, at 6:00 PM, the Youth Commission will be holding their 30th Annual Youth Recognition Award Program at Muzzy Field. Family, friends, and colleagues will be honoring 14 award winners that were chosen by the Youth Commission, and we have a great night for it, so that's good. No rain. Second, a big congrats to the Bristol Parks Recreation Youth and Community Services for being selected as a 2022 gold medalist finalist for the National Gold Medal Award Program administered by the American Academy for Park and Recreation Administration in partnership with the National Recreation and Park Association. The Bristol Parks Recreation Youth and Community Services is the top four agency in the entire country, so big congrats to them. Bristol is very proud of you all. Just a reminder that we have Dinner on the Diamond coming up on Saturday, May 21st, starting at 5:00 at Muzzy Field. It's a great opportunity to come out and support the Parks and Rec Department. Please look on the Parks, Bristol Parks Recreation Youth and Community Services website for more information. And for the Board of Education, the Board of Ed recognized two winners for the Invention Convention. We have Elijah Simmons from South Side School for his swinging squirrel, swinging squirrel. We have Elijah Simmons from South Side School for his Swinging Squirrel, Swinging Squirrel, and Emerson Dell Area from Edgewood for her Universal Furniture Protector. These two students will be representing Connecticut in the 7th Annual Invention Convention U.S. Nationals in Dearborn, Michigan on 6/1. So I'd like to wish these two students good luck as they move forward, and that's it.
Thank you. Sebastian?
Yes, the Environmental Learning Centers of Connecticut is hosting their annual Spring Fair on Saturday, May 21st at the Barnes Nature Center on Shrub Road, starting at 10:00 AM. There'll be guided hikes as well as fun events for the kids like crafts and learning activities and music. I spoke with the Executive Director, Scott Heth, today and they, he said they've been dealing with so many starts and stops throughout the pandemic for the last two years that he's really hoping for a good event and that's on the 21st to really energize the community, have some consistent good weather going into the spring and summer. They have a couple of really good projects going on there, so hopefully everyone can get out, enjoy the weather, and then enjoy the Barnes Nature Center there and enjoy the outdoors.
Thank you. Andrew, any announcements?
Just a couple. The Memorial Day Parade is being held in Forestville on the 29th and the parade kicks off at noon in the center of Forestville. Then we have the Memorial Day in Bristol on the 30th kicking off at 10:00 AM. Bristol's route will be from Hope Street, going down, taking a left on School Street, and the procession will make its way down to Boulevard where it will stop at the gazebo where the mayor will be making remarks after every, the parade is ended. The Veterans Annual Salute Dinner is tomorrow at 6:00 PM. This year, they'll be honoring nine recruits from different branches of service within the town and the surrounding areas. Tickets are sold at the door and they're $30 a piece. And that is, and then June 5th, the Veterans Strong Center is holding a cannon bottle drive from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, as well as a shred event being held at the same time at the Bristol Senior Center. That's it for me.
Thank you, Andrew. I will add just a couple of things and Sebastian, you reminded me of one. So the Pigeon Hill area that has been purchased through the state for open space is actually closed off. Most people will see that, so I just want to make this announcement that the gate went up, there is demolition occurring of the property that was there, and you can access the Barnes Nature Center through the Barnes Nature Center. We ask that while we're in this transition period to get that area ready, that we don't have people going into that area until it's completely safe, so I did want to make that announcement. We do have openings on boards and commissions and June is actually looking ahead like it's going to be a pretty big month of potential reappointments, but also that leaves the opportunity for people resigning. So I just want to remind people that if you want to serve on a board or commission, that you send an email to the mayor's office at bristolct.gov with your information and your interest and we'll follow back up with you. Our list isn't all that long right now, but I want to stay ahead of this because I do foresee some resignations coming unfortunately and we want to make sure that we stay on top of that. I forgot my last note here. Oh, I just wanted to mention that within the ARPA grant that Diane highlighted earlier, $24.7 million has now been allocated for eligible programs. Within that, there's a $2 million allocation to those projects that were capital projects that were not necessarily approved on the first round because they alone were not transformational. But we have a $2 million grant out there for businesses, for nonprofits, to go ahead and get their capital projects done with a 50-50 match. We know that there are somewhere between 25 and 40 of those projects out there and if everyone were to hit their max contribution of $60,000, the city would give them $60,000 of ARPA funding, we'd be pretty much right at that $2 million mark. So we've done very well and we have now allocated throughout our first round all of the funding that we plan to at this point. The remaining $3.3 million is really kind of being held in abeyance for any city projects that might be matched through state grants, so I just wanted to give people an update on that. And that's all I have for announcements. Anybody else have anything else that they forgot? No? We'll move on to number five, which is the Consent Agenda. Does anybody have anything that they'd like to take off the consent agenda? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion or questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to number six, which is reports and committee reports, and we'll start with 6A, which is real estate.
Okay, out of the Real Estate Committee, we do have a piece of city-owned property, which is number 12 Waterbury Road, that we have listed for sale. This piece of property has a few difficult features on it that probably have affected us from really having serious buyers at this point in time. So I do have a motion. I hereby move that the City of Bristol authorize bottom-line realty to reduce the listing price to sell city-owned property known as Lot Number 12, Waterbury Road, from $39,900 down to $34,900. I further move that this matter be referred to Corporation Council to prepare and/or review any necessary documents. And I further move that the mayor or acting mayor be authorized to execute any necessary documents to effectuate the same.
Second.
Second. Any, oops, any comments, questions, further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. We'll go to B, which is.
Okay, also out of the Real Estate Committee, we do have a piece of property that I'll make a motion on. I hereby move that the following property owned by 153 School Street LLC be referred to the Planning Commission for a Connecticut General Statute 8-24 report for the purpose of acquiring a certain parcel of land known as Map 29, Lot 68, School Street. I hereby further move that this matter be forwarded to the Park Department, Water and Sewer Department, Economic Development Department, and Public Works to determine if any of these departments have a use for this property.
Second.
Any comments, questions?
Just through the chair, please. I think this is a great opportunity given the road construction that's going to happen in the West End later on and I'm sure the city, I'm glad we're letting departments have a chance to indicate what their use is because I think it will become invaluable during that construction.
And maybe beyond, I agree. Any other comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. I think we're on C now, right?
C. Okay. Just want to make sure I'm reading the correct one. Okay. Also out of the Real Estate Committee, I hereby move that the following property be referred to the Planning Commission for a general, Connecticut General Statute 8-24 report for the purpose of purchasing said lot for the construction of a new firehouse in the Forestville section of the City of Bristol. Map 43, Lot Number 16, Church Avenue. I further move that this matter be referred to Corporation Council to prepare and/or review any necessary documents. I further move that the mayor or acting mayor be authorized to execute any necessary documents to effectuate the same.
Second.
Great. Any comments, questions on this? We could have a little discussion if need be. I think this one is somewhat familiar with all of you. We've been waiting, I think, years to get the firehouse up and moving. We have appropriated the money for the firehouse and previous Boards of Finance have appropriated the money for the purchase of this lot and we're going to try to see if we can get this deal done, so. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. D, last one for real estate.
Okay. I hereby move that the City of Bristol approve a temporary access agreement to Eversource for a 10-year period. Said access agreement will run across city-owned properties known as Map 67, Lot Number 31, Clark Avenue, and Map Number 30, Lot R, R4-1, Prospect Street, also known as Henry Street. I further move that the mayor or acting mayor be authorized to execute any necessary documents to effectuate the same and that this matter be referred to the Corporation Council for any necessary action.
Second.
Great. Any comments, discussion? Anything further to add, Sue? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. And now we move on to ordinance, but we stay with you, Sue.
Okay.
Yeah, that's quite a few.
Okay, so. Okay, I make a motion to move that Section 6-34 and 6-35, voting districts and precincts of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, is hereby amended to read as follows. I further move that the city clerk publish said amendments and additions to the Code of Ordinances and that they become effective upon the expiration of 14 days from the date of their publication in a newspaper of general circulation in the City of Bristol.
Have a second?
Second.
We got it. Sebastian? Any further comments or questions about this? I know that we have Sharon here, if anybody has any questions or if you want to add anything, Sharon? We've been working on this for a while, so we don't have to, but.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question I thought of, and Sharon, you may be able to answer this. And I want to congratulate Sharon and her counterpart for the amount of work that you did to go out and look where all those locations are and basically even out the districts. And overall, not that many people are going to be affected, but I was thinking, do we send letters to those who are so they know now you don't go to Green Hills, you go to maybe Bristol Eastern? So those people who have changed district, do we notify them?
We are sending out notifications. We're sending out magnets to every household to remind them.
There we go.
Hello?
That's good.
Thank you, ma'am.
Better.
Thank you. We are sending out magnets. When we, we were going to send out large postcards to get them noticed and we started thinking about it and we priced out magnets and they are comparable price, so we're going to send out a magnet that says, "You vote at such and such a school," and when the, the date of the election and what they're going to be voting for. So we're hoping they're going to put it right on their refrigerator and vote every single year.
Great. Good plan. Thank you.
Everybody, every single year. Good. Any other comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. And F, last one for ordinance.
Okay, I will start with a motion to waive the reading. In accordance with Section 21F of the Charter of the City of.
We want to, I think, do, if I'm correct, a motion to waive the reading. We need a second and we need to vote on that. Yep, go ahead, can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we can do the next motion. Approved.
I always mess this up. Okay.
Read the motion now.
Okay. No, so I was supposed to read that. Okay, I would also like to make a motion to introduce. In accordance with Section 21F of the Charter of the City of Bristol, the following amendments to the Code of Ordinances are hereby introduced. I hereby move that the time and place of Tuesday, June 7th at 5:00 PM, in the main library, lower level, 5 High Street, Bristol, Connecticut, be set for the holding of a public hearing thereon by the ordinance committee and the city clerk publish notice of said public hearing and the proposed amendments to the Code of Ordinances as required by the city charter.
Have a second?
Second.
All right, we should probably have a little bit of discussion on this now, too, to talk a little bit more about it and I'll let you start, Sue, and you can add if need be.
So out of the ordinance committee, we came up with a flag policy that we think is, is very simple, but it also, I think, protects the City of Bristol from any type of legal harm. As we just saw with a recent, last week, the Supreme Court came out with their ruling on the Boston case on their flag issue that they were having. And I think that the draft that we're putting forward is, is in, is in similar form with what a lot of other towns have, have gone to avoid putting themselves in any kind of like legal jeopardy.
Great. Sebastian, you want to comment? You look like you're going to say something.
I mean, I appreciate the, this policy. I think it's, it's sound for the city. I think it's, as far as just unifying symbols, we should be flying those flags. I think there's probably an exhausted majority out there who are, you know, probably seeing any, any symbol of anyone's sensibilities that might across, come across the mayor's desk and they probably appreciate those symbols of unity being flown at all times. I don't think this is a referendum on, on the pride flag. I think we've kind of taken a bigger view than that. So I think that it's a, it's a good policy and it's, it's representative of what we want.
Great. Any other comments? Cheryl?
I would just also like to share that there is a provision for the veterans to fly the POW, MIA flag, the official service flags of the armed forces, or ensigns and penance that they have. And this particular language was reviewed at a Veterans Council meeting and they were on board with this that feel their needs would be satisfied at because we have the memorial park, so, which was important to us as well.
Good. And I know we have debated this at our city council meeting, it went to ordinance, it came from Public Works, but for those that might be in the audience and not fully aware of what we're, exactly we're talking about, just to be clear, the new ordinance will allow the city to fly the U.S. flag, the Connecticut State flag, and the City of Bristol flag. And then, as Cheryl just talked about, in our veterans parks, we can go ahead and do military flags. So we're now in the process where that went through ordinance and this is up for a public hearing.
And this is also for city-maintained properties, so this carves out our public schools. The Board of Education are, is already working on their own flag policy. Also, there is a third section that just came on that we added on during the last ordinance meeting and it is for any city property serving as a station for the city of the Bristol Police Department or Fire Department, that they be allowed to fly their official departmental flag also. So that has been added on as of the last ordinance committee meeting and we welcome everyone to come to the public hearing at our next ordinance meeting so that you can partake in this process and share your thoughts.
Great. Thanks. I think we're ready for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right. Sue, do you want to take a little break and we'll come back for your announcements? Start with Sebastian, do you have any committee reports?
No reports tonight.
Jolene?
Yes, I do have one for the Board of Education. I just wanted to announce that Bristol has officially declared a mascot for BAMs. It will be the BAMs Bears and that was drawn by a high schooler named Molly Dagel. She did an outstanding job. So I, I was trying to get a copy of what it looked like because it's adorable, but I didn't have time to get that to share. The last thing, too, for BAMs is that the colors, they officially announced their school colors will be black and gold, so that's, that's it.
Great. And can you just remind everybody what BAM stands for? Because I think I have this right, but I want to make sure. Bristol Arts.
Arts, magnets.
Innovation magnet?
Innovation magnet, yeah.
Okay.
It's a long one.
It is. It is better than MBI AMS, which I just got down, so. Anything else, Jolene?
No, that's it.
Great. Susan, any other reports?
I think all my motions covered everything that's going on in my committees.
Yep. Busy, busy month for you. Jackie?
Yeah, I just have one small item, which is relative to the school on the Boulevard. Make it easier. Landscaping is moving along and the trees have been planted. As of this past weekend, there were 24 seats left for the middle school and they had another lottery, but unfortunately, I don't know what the results of that lottery was, so I don't know if all those seats have now been taken or if there's still going to be another lottery.
Very good. Yeah, and I think they're fully allotted for the middle school, correct? So this was just. So this was just for the high school, or that was the middle school?
The high school is totally complete.
Okay, I have it backwards.
The middle school, they had 24 seats as of this past weekend, but they had another lottery this weekend.
Okay.
So I don't know if they're all filled now.
Good, coming along well. Thanks. Cheryl?
No report, please.
And Andrew, any reports?
Just a couple, but I want to go back. The Forestville Veterans Parade starts at 1:30 on Sunday to 29. If you drive down the Boulevard, there's quite a few things going on besides the bridge work. We have the Blue Star Memorial Garden being worked on, that will be dedicated on Memorial If you've driven a little bit further, you'll see the cannon wheels have been removed from the cannon, so it kind of looks strange sitting there on railroad ties, but the wheels are 100 years old. So we can't exactly take those to the neighborhood carpenter and fix. So former Parks employee Lenny Lamott did a little bit of legwork on his own, and found two Amish companies that can handle the job, and they will also be putting some kind of shim underneath it, so that the wheels will no longer touch, and we won't have to run into this problem again. Parks, Mayor Caggianno, myself, and Councilman Tebow, we attended the Spinelli Fishing Derby over the weekend. I'm hoping I can speak for the other two. It was so much fun to watch the kids come running up with their, didn't matter if it was a one-inch fish or a two-foot fish, they ran up with nothing but excitement. So that was good. And then we also were there, Mayor and I, were at the Giamatti Field for one of their opening day celebrations. We did congratulate all the kids, but I just want to say, again, congratulate the volunteers. It takes a lot, and you keep those kids smiling ear to ear, so I do say kudos again to the volunteers for all the little league. That's it for me, Mayor.
Great. Cheryl, you have one more to add, I think?
Yes, I'm sorry. In the arts and council meeting, there is a reveal date for the Martin Luther King mural, so please save the date of July 14th. Plans are underway for what kind of celebration. I just want to get everybody to have that on their calendar, and there will be the reveal of the mural that day. Thank you.
Great.
Mayor, can I say one more?
Sure.
Kind of an important one, it's quick. On the fireboard, firefighter Jeremy Robotham was pinned as the newest fire inspector over our last fireboard, so I want to say congratulations to him.
Thank you, Andrew. All right, I think we're done. Yep, good. We'll move on to number seven, unfinished business. Therese, any unfinished business on your line? No?
Well, there is, maybe new business, which is for Diane.
Yeah, we'll do that under new business, and make sure that we catch that there, which is coming up. Anybody else?
I have nothing else.
Okay. Any other unfinished business from council? All right, then we will move to number eight, which is new business, and I'm going to hand it to Sue. You were looking the other way, but did better.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that Mayor Jeffrey Caggianno be authorized to sign any and all documents required for the City of Bristol's compliance with the American Rescue Plan Act state and local fiscal relief fund program.
Second.
And this is, I think, just a reporting thing. Diane's still here, I think. I don't see her. Yep, there she is. Just a reporting thing, because the original funds were set up under Mayor Ellen Zappo-Sasu, and now I need to sign off on that, so we're just doing a formality here. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Any other new business? Hearing none. We'll move to resignations, and I think we have a couple, right, Therese?
We do.
More than a couple.
The first is from Leslie Kish, from the Bristol Burlington Health District. The second is from Rory Guio, from the Zoning Board of Appeals. The third is from Karen Lombardi, from the School Readiness Council. And the last one is from Carolyn Chekovitz, from the Inland Wetlands Commission.
Motion to put on file and a thank you note sent to each individual.
Second.
So I think we're ready for a vote. This is exactly why I asked for people to volunteer for boards and commissions, so that we can fill some of these slots. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. So now we move on to appointments. These are all previous to this. I will start first with the City Arts and Culture Commission. I'll entertain a motion to reappoint Andrea Adams to a three-year term that will now expire on 5/25.
Move approval.
Second.
All right, we'll go, we'll get you next time, Andrew, you're half a second late. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Bristol Historic District Commission, I would move, I ought to entertain a motion, excuse me, to appoint Andrew Collins as an alternate member to an unexpired term to 1/27.
So moved.
Yep?
That was the appointment we did at the April 20th meeting.
Oh, we did do that one, okay. Sorry about that, so.
You want to pardon me again?
I thought we did. I was actually having the conversation with Olivia today. That's good. All right, I apologize. So we'll move on to Inland Wetlands Commission.
Double the pay, you know?
We'll double your pay right now for that. Yeah, that's true. Inland Wetlands Commission, to reappoint David Rooks to a three-year term to 5/25, and to reappoint David James Skerritt to a three-year term, also expires 5/25.
So moved.
I'm going to give that one to Jackie. Maybe a second from Sebastian. There we go. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right, last ones. And the part-time Assistant Corporation Counsel. So first, I would like to appoint Jason Welch to replace Richard Lacy to an unexpired term that ends on 11/23. This is pending successful completion of a background investigation and pre-employment, physical, and drug screening. I'll entertain that motion.
So moved. Second.
I see Cheryl laughing there. This is not a laughing matter, but all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? I missed it. But anyway, welcome, Jason. I think you're going to be a tremendous addition to the team, and we look forward to working with you as we get through the onboarding process, and a lot of this...
Check, can you?
Yeah, we'll see. I think Jason will be just fine. At the same time, we are going to do an appointment for Attorney Richard Lacy, and it's going to be a short-time appointment. I want to first just thank Dick for 44 years of continuous service in Corporation Council, and the amount of effort and time that he spends is full-time job, and this is an assistant part-time Corporation Counsel. So I've gotten to know you very well over the last couple months, and it is a little bittersweet that I would entertain a motion to appoint Richard Lacy to a short-term position that will expire on September 1st, 2023. Oh, '22, sorry. How about that? Jason is 22. Thank you, good catch, so that's 2022. Cheryl moved it. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Jolene. Any comments or questions?
No, just thank you. Thank you for all your service.
I echo that as well, too. It's going to be a tough transition period, but I'm really looking forward to the whole team working together and moving beyond this, so thank you again. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right. We're going to have to do a lot of work on next month's appointments, to, number one, get them right first, and also to take care of all of them. We'll go to number 11, and I'll have you read that one for me, Therese.
Authorization for mayor or acting mayor to sign the ClearGov Service Agreement pending review by Corporation Council.
Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? Second to Sebastian. This is something I'm kind of excited about, so I do want to take a second to talk about this. This is one of the first things that Diane and I talked about, and this is an electronic budget book that will be able to be accessible, will open up a lot of these line items. You know, I'm a big Excel guy, and Munis doesn't work so well with Excel, in my opinion, and this will be something that not only council, but even the public can go and follow what's happening and look things up much more quickly and readily. So thank you, Diane, very much for putting the effort forward to get this going. We start in this year, and I think it's going to be a learning year, and then next year will be the full budget book, so. Any comments, questions?
No, I actually went to a few towns that had this to play around and see what kind of information I could get out, and I think it's going to be very user-friendly for the taxpayers that have questions about what's in the budget. Will the Board of Ed also be using this software?
They will not.
Be nice if we could get them on board with that as well.
It's something we might be able to work on. Good. Great. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right, number 12.
Approval to submit State of Connecticut Department of Education 2022 Summer Enrichment Program grant for a maximum award of $75,000, and authorization for mayor or acting mayor or superintendent of the Parks Recreation, Youth, and Community Services to execute the application.
Move approval?
Second.
Any other comments or questions on this one? Pretty straightforward. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Number 13.
Authorization to submit the 2022 Neighborhood Assistance Act applications to the Department of Revenue Services for Action.
Move approval?
Second.
Discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Number 14.
Resolution regarding submission of grant contract agreement between State of Connecticut, DEEP, and the City of Bristol for $1.2 million for the Piquabic River retaining wall, and authorization for the mayor or acting mayor to execute. And there is a resolution to read, Your Honor?
Yep. Does somebody have the resolution they can read? Up.
I'll hear.
Yep, go ahead, thanks, Cheryl.
Be it hereby resolved that Jeffrey Caggianno, mayor, City of Bristol, be and hereby is authorized to execute on behalf of the City of Bristol a grant contract under the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection with the State of Connecticut for $1,200,000 grant for the Piquabic River retaining wall. In addition, that Jeffrey Caggianno, mayor, is hereby authorized to enter into such agreements, contracts, and execute all documents necessary to said grant with the State of Connecticut.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Jackie has a second. It's a resolution, so we'll do a roll call vote in a second, but if we have comments or questions, that's great. One thing I do want to do before we even have that is I do want to thank Chris Cyogas, Representative Chris Cyogas, who worked really hard to bring this grant to fruition towards the end of the legislative session, and in the nick of time for our budgeting purposes, right, Diane? So I want to thank him for that effort. And questions or comments?
Yes, my question is, is this to repair the work of the wall that fell? Okay, but it's not expanded beyond that, it's just that repair.
Yep, I believe so, right, Ray? Yep.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
And, oh, roll call, sorry, sorry, sorry. Thank you very much. I'll do, you want to do the roll call for me? Therese, go ahead.
Tebow?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Lucitani?
Yes.
Penyoto?
Yes.
Howe?